Hello, everybody. I'll call to order the Pennsyl County Regional School Committee meeting for, what's it? September 25th, first day of school.
Not 25th.
September 5th, did I say 25th?
Yeah.
I'm moving forward.
Move it ahead.
You can spare the school last before.
The next meeting.
All right. Role call. Wayne. Lana.
Here.
Emily.
Yes.
Marie.
Here.
Julie.
Here.
Chair is here. Ashley's running a few minutes late, she's on her way. Chris.
Here.
Deena.
Here.
Three, let's revisit hopefully.
Yes.
Our numbers change.
Make it to approve the consent agenda. Second.
Any comments or questions? Go ahead, Chris.
So, the only thing that I would say is on the policies for the use of facilities is I know when we did the rates the last time, there was a lot of concern from some of the groups with whether they could afford it, whether they're going to be notified ahead of time. So, I would hope, I think some of them are dependent upon a superintendent. So, I'm hoping, Justin, that you, you or whoever, whether it's Jonathan maybe, I don't know who's going to be doing with that, dealing with that, but when we redid it last time, it was before you came in and there was a lot of angst from some of the groups that they wouldn't be able to afford the facilities anymore, so.
Yep, sure. So, Mr. Seymour is all over that and I know the committee, Deena can speak for that a little bit, but we met last week and we're still meeting again, I think another week and a half.
Yeah, we're going through and making changes and taking people's advice and just kind of, it's a, I mean, it's a working document because we've never done it.
Never done it.
And we're, you know, checking out everyone's around our area, their policies, so we're working on it. It's a, it's in motion, so it's not in stone or anything.
Yeah, you're not wrong, Chris. I think there was a fair amount of angst around some lack of clarity about what people did apply to what spaces and I think that's, same thing, like people ask me about it, I tell them it's all being addressed. This is the time to provide that input and, you know, per usual, the district's really good about working with people.
Right. I mean, I think it's a very different situation than last time, so I'm hoping that people are understanding that it is a new facility, so changes have to be made, but no one's out to like bankrupt any of the local.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, so overall, the idea has always been you want the groups to be here, the local groups to be here and we have no interest in making money off of groups who support a building, so at the same time, you want to protect your investment, but I think at the next, the goal is that the next meeting have a sell a fee schedule in front of the school committee and just run through scenarios about if this, then this is what this has to be, just so everyone's on the same page. And I think there's one really important piece in there that the executive director of operations, Jonathan in this case, has discretion to make adjustments based on situations because no two situations are the same.
Right. Okay. I mean, mostly it was to let these groups know that they're not going to be facing situations as they were.
No, that's not helpful.
Six, seven, however many years ago it was.
So, we have a motion in the second. All in favor? Subcommittee updates. Very quickly, I'll lead things off regarding school committee goals. We got some member feedback, thank you very much for that. Subcommittee's getting a meeting shortly, we should have something to share with everybody. Finance and business?
Not really an update. Didn't get a chance to sign warrants. That's about it for right now.
Teaching learning accountability?
No, we're scheduling our next meeting, it's not scheduled.
Policy?
We were just, we're basically dealing with facilities and that was our policy update.
Community is on slash communication.
We are now the party of three again and I do just want to say that I did have somebody reach out to me from the town of Maryland, just asking and just again, supporting our togetherness. So, I would say I think it's again, I think it's good to see our towns looking for our involvement again.
Agreed. Do we need, do we open any public comment?
We do not.
Princess Superintendent?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Just a quick few updates first. First day of school was today and I will just tell you, I think I've obviously sat in the stands, talked to people, it sounds like things went extremely well on all the buildings. I know Ms. Naff and I had gone to more over at Bagnell. I know the kindergartners were showing up today with their families, kind of taking tours of the rooms. But it was a great start. It's definitively of all my years here, the smoothest start that we've had leading up to this point and this point. Of course, as soon as I say that, we all know what happened, so. But it went really well and it was just, and the kids are so pumped, like walking around the suite, they're so excited and it's, it's fabulous. The principals did a good, great job in building admin, the teachers, just a fabulous job preparing for the students to return, so thank you to all of them. Also, I think we mentioned this before, we had that, we did receive that math curriculum grant for $30,000. That's going to be used to do our new addition, Eureka Squared is what we're going to upgrade our math curriculum to. Also, we, and the consent agenda, you just approved a $10,000 grant that we got from Crystal Engineering for the robotics program and I'll just tell you, we have, we are expecting a few more grants coming in. It's awesome. I know Mo's down there, he's, he hasn't promised us that we're going to be crushing it in competitions, but I've already seen some of the things he can do and produce. The kids are in for a treat, like it's, it's awesome to have someone of his caliber inside this building. And then, one other thing I'll just make mention of is that I did email you, I know people work and things like that, but if you want to go and take a tour of any of the buildings, there's a signup sheet. You all have editing rights into that sheet, so just, you can put your name in and if you want to see something and you're working there today, just email the principal and they'll show you around. But I think it's just a good opportunity for you to see, walk around, see the building, what it's like, walk around, talk with the principal and then when they're there, just let them talk about their school improvement plan in person and things that they're doing and things that they're looking to do. But just wanted to let you know that's out there. The principals have view only access, so they know whether or not to expect you. And that's all I have.
Easy. Congrats on a good first day of school.
Thank you.
So, that brings us into new business and item A, which is this was responsibility to pick a, point a resident of Merrimack to the Whittier School Committee. We have two candidates, who's best interested in it and they're here tonight to answer the questions that we all agreed upon, both answered the same questions. It's Michael Rossi and Lisa Kelly. Mr. Rossi, do you want to go first?
Sure.
Just come in, have a seat right next to Marianne and we'll. Okay, we'll keep this pretty simple. You both get the same three questions. They're designed to be sort of open ended, so if you could go with them where you want to. Can you talk a little bit about why you'd like to serve in the position and professional experience that you'd bring to it and if you'd be fit?
Sure, great. Thank you. Thanks for having me here tonight. My name's Mike Rossi, resident in Merrimack and also a, I hate to say how many years, it's a 30-year career educator. So, that's kind of what brings me here. We've always been taught, my family, to give back to the community, find ways to do that. This was something that came up. I will inform the committee, my wife is a, is a guidance counselor at Whittier Tech. She is in, so she's in the teacher union, so she's in the teacher group, so I did check with a couple people to see like what that would entail if I were to be the successful candidate for this. And one of the things that she, that they did inform me that that would be, I would have to stay out of the teacher programming piece and I'll quote on things like that, but all of the areas I would be able to be involved. But, so she informed me that there was an opening on the committee. I did see the posting from the Pennsyl County Regional School District and I looked at it and I said, yeah, that could be something that I could do to help out Merrimack. I've been in Merrimack for 10 years, so our kids went to school. My kids were all out of school or out of, I have two left in college, two tuitions. So, walking through this building, I was just amazed because they went to the old structure and I just, I said, wow, this is, this is unbelievable and a lot of good work went into this. My wife and I had a very ministerly heart, going door to door, asking people to support this project and I remember them saying, why, well, what's in it for you? And I was like, well, my kids aren't even at the theater, not going to see that. My kids will be out of school and it's so good for the community. And I think I want to do the same thing for Whittier Tech if they could, I want to represent the kids of Merrimack, the town of Merrimack and also this board because you're the appointing authority for that. I do have experience in budget, a lot of experience in budget as a sitting principal. I was a principal in Hayrow, also here in, currently in the RAC. I've had to do presentations to school committees, so I'm familiar with the budget process. While the budget processes are similar, the funding formula is very different and I find that very intriguing to learn more about that. I'm a collaborator and I think you have to be as a school administrator. So, working with people, building teams, structure to come up with goals, to say like, this is where we are, this is where we want to be. I think that's an area of strength of mine. Also, hiring practices. I've been on superintendent search committees, superintendent hiring committees, things like that. I also have to do a lot of hiring for my own building, so I think I have some experience there that would be helpful for the board. And finally, on the negotiation piece, I've been a negotiator as on the teacher side. I've also been a negotiation, on the, yeah, on some bound negotiations and the school administration, school committees, that most recently in the RAC representing the school committees by the administrative team. So, I have a, I think I have a strong grasp of what goes on. I know there's a learning curve because it's a different school system, different type of rules, regulations, things like that. But, yeah, I'm just interested. I saw it and I was like, this is something that is a way to give back to the community.
Thank you. A little more generally, your understanding and view of the role and responsibilities of the committee, do you agree?
Sure. Budget is probably number one, probably most important to this group and to the people of Merrimack. That's the hiring of superintendent and assistant superintendent, business manager and also setting up global strategic plans for the school, for the school, for the school district.
And the last one, relevant to what you mentioned in the first answer a little bit, but can you share any of your views regarding the proposed building project or anything?
Sure. So, that's, that's an important one. When I think back, when we moved to this community and our kids walked into the school, one of them came, started at the middle school and then came to the, to the high school and it was shocking to see what the school looked like and where we were sending our kids. And then when we were getting phone calls saying that school was canceled today because of a structural issue in the school and different things like that were going on and I was like, wow, I can't believe that we let it get this far and this is what we're dealing with. And now our three towns had to really work super hard to try to figure out a solution for that and really work hard at trying to pass something in the communities. And there was a lot of like, going door to door, I learned so much about how people felt about building this and especially in these communities. And then I learned a lot about the history of that. So, one of the things that, I would never want that to happen again. I've been in Whittier Tech as a middle school principal in Hayrow, I've toured that building many times with kids. I know that that building requires a lot of different things that we wouldn't have necessarily in a comprehensive, comprehensive high school. So, therefore, it's, it would be expensive. It's going to be expensive. I don't think it's something that we can say, no, we're not going to do it, we're just going to let it, see what happens down the road because I think we're just giving more to our kids that they're going to have to take care of. So, I'd be for it if, after looking at all the, all the things, if the conditions of the school are deteriorating, would they, like I'm hearing that they are? And if it's something that we would have to really, that we'd really have to put a lot of money into and it would come off the, you know, when you, when you build a school, you get a lot of state funding and it's off a percentage of whatever the community, well, everyone knows here, I think that part because you've been through that. But I would rather put money for them when they know the state's going to come back and support them with a percentage because if we have to stop fixing things and like we had to with the former high school and middle school here, that just comes off by regular tax revenue and I'd rather, much rather get a lot more firm money.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for joining us. Thanks for expressing interest in it. Thank you for being here. So, you got the sneak preview, but we'll warm up right in a row. Talk a little bit about why you want to serve in the position, about whatever professional experience you have that you think makes you fit for it.
Yeah, thank you. I had the advantage of hearing the questions ahead of time. So, I'm a short-term Merrimack resident as an alternative. I've lived in Merrimack for two years. So, my perspective is that I have two high school age children that, well, they're 12 and 13 now, so they'll be approaching high school age. So, I'm curious about learning about Whittier Tech as a program. I have a high school graduate from Whittier Tech who's very successful in his shop field. And I also have a nephew who is currently at Whittier Tech. So, I'm really curious just from their success and also from just what they've said about the program. I'm really curious about learning more and just being a part of it. I am a special education teacher and coordinator at River Valley Charter School. So, I bring the perspective of special education, so I hope that that would be helpful to the committee. I also work at our school for the grant writing, so I'm familiar with grants management and also gems. So, hopefully that would be helpful as well. And I think one of the reasons I'm here is that my district is really small. We have just 288 kids total and so I'm really curious in learning about how a bigger district works and how the governance of a bigger district works too. I've worked on the Board of Trustees and the Accountability Committee at my district, but I imagine it works a lot differently with a huge school, to me, a huge school like Whittier.
Thank you. Your understanding of the role and responsibilities of the committee, do you agree?
I actually don't know a lot about what the roles and responsibilities are. Hopefully, I'll learn as I go. I'm a quick learner. As I see it, my goals are to listen and to get feedback that's needed. I'm a really good organizer, so if that is something that's needed and as I mentioned before, something that I'm really good at is looking at accountability and how that plays into the role. And something that I would love to see as part of the committee is to make sure that all stakeholders are heard, looking at our special populations, thinking about our low income, our special education, our EL learners. So, that's something that I would like to see and hope bring to the committee.
And any, any views on the proposed building project or thoughts, what do you have?
I need to learn more about it before I can have a very good opinion on it. I know that as a parent of students who are in the community, they're, it's, it sounds amazing, but I know that I need to, to do a little more reading on it before I can, because I know there are two different views on that, so I would need to find out more on that.
Thank you very much. Thank you for coming tonight. Thank you for having me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Before I move forward, I'll just take the liberty of speaking on behalf of the committee and it's to our benefit to bring candidates coming forward like this. And I hope that we can only point one, obviously, whichever way we end up going. I hope you can sort of consider it as pressing just in many, many other ways that people can suck you in. We haven't been doing this in a while. I guess I'll, I'll first open discussion for the board. Do you guys feel like you need to collectively sit on this for a bit, come back at the next meeting and discuss? Or is this something that the group would like to address right now? Go ahead, Chris.
Well, so my concern with waiting till the next meeting is I'm, I'm not familiar enough with the schedule of Whittier to know, like, is that going to be a big hole for our district being represented? I don't know how often they meet and stuff.
So, they are meeting pretty regularly right now. I know in November they have a huge meeting where they're going around because they have, they're going to be voting, so they've gone through the approval process as we have. So, that building construction program is, they were approved by the MSBA. So, now they're trying to actually do the vote, it's a regional vote that they're doing in November. So, I would say that timeliness here is probably an important factor that's, we'd hurt both candidates anyway. Just trying to learn the ins and outs, what's needed, why it's needed and so that they can go out there and tell the residents of Merrimack, here's what's happening. An accurate way would be pretty important. Also, understanding that they just, just met them.
All right, so I'm going to assume that we can go ahead and, I mean, I think if nobody has any, any issues with that, just for Whittier, I think we need to try and go ahead and move ahead tonight if possible, if you guys are comfortable with that. Any comments from anybody before we, before we go? Do we just want to do a motion for a name? Is that the way to do it? Does somebody want a similar motion? Do you want to do a role call by name? We haven't done this before, so I have to forgive me, I don't know where this falls in Roberts, but. I'll go ahead and just make a motion based simply on the level of experience, on the depth of experience in education, the board appoint Michael Rossi.
Second.
All those in favor?
Can I make a comment?
You may.
Which reiterates what you said, that I was in a position when I was appointed and there were two very qualified candidates, so I really want to say that both of you are incredibly qualified and I hope, like Chris said, that you, I do agree, a decision needs to be made sooner than later, but thank you very much for coming forward and I, we hope, we hope it goes well for you.
I'm going to echo, because I had to go through the same appointment process.
Right, right, yes.
It's not easy and it's, and again, same thing. I know that the other individual that I was dealing with also continued to find another role and actually see that and I hope you will also. So, thank you again, appreciate it. And thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Did you already vote, changed to 4.6 and I did not get that though. Could we do it again?
Absolutely.
Just do what?
All those in favor?
Okay. Close. Stained.
Stained.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Item B, technology plan update.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have the privilege of being in the presence of Ms. Kat Page, who is our Director of Technology Instructional Education here at Pennsyl County. She has for you a presentation. When I first came on board, we didn't have the tech plan in place and as you may have noticed, during COVID, technology was very, very important, so we were working at warp speed trying to catch up and her expertise has been invaluable. So, she's here tonight to just share with you the tech, an updated technology plan that she's worked on over quite a bit of time and consulted with. She collaborates, she has a committee that she works with educators from across the district and based on their feedback, she's put together this plan, so Kat will go ahead and, it looks like even the screen's waiting.
Okay. So, I'm going to give you the nickel tour and show you how to find and navigate the tech plan so that you can then take your time to look at the information. So, on prsd.org, you can find the tech plan on every single site, the district site and all of the school sites. On the district site, if you go to the hamburger menu here on the left and you go to departments, expand it, go to technology, expand that, you will find the technology. On the school sites, you will find the tech plan on the hamburger menu, right there. It all goes to the same place, so. This is a live document, so it's going to change as we update, reconfigure, take input, et cetera. There are several ways to get to the information and the most obvious one here are the tabs on the right. They are the general overarching topics. When you click on a tab from anywhere, you will get to the first page of that section. You can also get there by going to contents and selecting exactly where you want to go. For instance, technology goals, we have the various years that you can get to. And we also have a third way. If you rest your cursor over here on the left, you'll notice that the slides open up and if you click on the number, you can then navigate aside menu. So, there's three different ways. Let's take a look at the navigation icons. There's only a few and right here on the table of contents, you'll notice that this icon is for the table of contents and it only shows up in one place. That would be the technology planning team, let's use Dr. B as an example. If you click on this pop-out icon, it takes you to his narrative where you can then email him and you can also, when you're done, go back to the table of contents. So, that is the one place that you'll be able to, well, two places actually, that you can get back to the table of contents. The other place would be down near SPAT. So, each of these sections has information that you can navigate to by going forward and backward and you can get there by going on the page turn on the bottom right or on the bottom top. You can also go back by clicking on the back page turn. So, if we go forward, you'll notice that each of these sections are color coded and you can click through, you'll see at the bottom it says continue in orange because this is the orange section. And if I continue to click on the page turn, I can navigate through this section until I get to where I don't see continue again, which means that the next time I click this, it goes to another section. So, we start here with access to technology and it begins with the prior access. We went back a little bit farther just so we could get some background on where we were before and where we're sort of getting a running start to where we are now. If you click continue, you will get to the next year, which is also prior and 22, 23 is now prior and we're now in our current technology. And you can go ahead and read the information here at your leisure. So, now we're in technology goals. You will notice that for each of the years, you have benchmarks, you have goals and benchmarks. If you see a green check mark, it means that we've achieved it. So, all of these goals have been achieved. Going to click continue or the page turn, you'll notice that we have one that is still in progress because the target date has not yet been reached. However, we could finish early, so if that finishes, you might notice in the plan in the future, there might be a check mark because we've already achieved that goal. So, if I continue through to the next section, we have our instructional technology. This is just sort of an overview of what is it and how the district evaluates resources and then we get into the actual reviewed resources, which there are lots of them. Click through different pages and you'll see, this is a teacher resource. Teachers are always, of course, reviewing resources and there are probably many more resources that they use, but you'll notice that if you come to these actual educational apps and subscriptions that are listed, these are more than ones the district is providing or that the district has vetted. The next section has various areas of instructional technology, resources, the online assessments, learning and content management systems, collaborative tools, production apps. And then each of these are resources that these grade levels use and can use from home. And then each of these are resources that these grade levels use and can use from home. They're available on the website, they all know how to get there. And when the students actually power up their Chromebooks, their homepages land on the appropriate resource. We have resources for interactive whiteboard, adaptive learning software, assistive learning software. And if you wish to, you can click on any of those links. Resources that are in use, that are e-textbook and digital curriculum for supporting, you know, digital materials. You'll see those there. And I believe this is the last one hope. So as far as instructional resources, obviously, the classroom is the most important. But equally as important are the programs that help run the district. For instance, Blackboard Connect messaging. Tyler is our human resources and payroll. These are things that you may not think of, but they are programs that the technology department supports. So they're always here. Internet safety and of course, our four categories of productivity, presentation, communication, and then sort of graphics, template, media combo. Now, we have some goals. This is from 22 to 23. And this goal is pretty much achieved. But since we don't have 100% in every single classroom just yet, about to, didn't want to put a check mark here, but soon. You'll notice that all of these have been achieved. And of course, 23, 22, 23 continued. All of these goals have been achieved. And as I said, you can take your time and read these as you will. Now, quite often when we think of technology, we forget about communication technologies. And that's important because those are things that definitely have to be supported, that have to be reviewed, purchased, vetted. And we have, of course, our messaging system. And we have our streaming platforms. We have our website, which has just changed, we launched a new one, you probably noticed. Our newsletter platform. And in talking about the communication technology, we also want to look at accessibility because we need everyone to be able to access our information. And this has some information for you on how we are addressing accessibility. And we have used different programs in the past. Here they are for 21 to 23. And now we are using these technologies. And our translation technology has changed as well. Digital signage in the school here, you probably noticed. And we're hoping to sort of branch out into the elementary schools, flat families, in the loggings for information as well. Voiceover internet protocol, intercom system, all part of communication technologies ordered by facilities and technology. And now we're into the buildings and facilities tech. We've got lots and lots of technology in this building. We've gone through it all, but we also have technology in the elementary schools. So you can go through and take a look at the various technologies. I'm about to enter another section, we don't have that goal continued. And we're into our staff. This is where we stand at the moment. And of course, we hope to adapt, change, grow. We have future goals and dreams. And the last thing is our organizational chart as it stands now. Now, I have a question. Would anyone like to tell me, how can I get back to the table of contents? One way from here. Wayne? No?
Hit the tab? Hit the red tab?
The tab is one way, absolutely. Another way. There you go.
Hammer.
Yeah, come on. Yep. All right. And if I wanted to navigate to any of these areas without losing cable contents, where the tabs, does anyone remember the way?
Can you click right? Oh, on the way left.
Way left. There you go. Beautiful.
You can just use the arrows.
And you can, absolutely. You can just, any page turn too. That's pretty much it. So if you have questions, send them. If you have to do our best to answer them. If you have any suggestions, input, we'd love to. Yes?
I just want to say, Maggie, this is a huge document that he worked hard on, so.
Oh, you're welcome, Maggie.
Thank you for all those check marks too. It seems like a lot's been completed and it doesn't seem like any small task, so I appreciate it. Thank you.
We have, we have a great group and a great, everyone in the district collaborates on these goals, so. All right?
Thanks, God.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Brings us to item C, school improvement plans. Thank you very much again, Mr. Chairman. So each year, the school improvement plan is required to come before the school committee for approval. You have in the packet, PDFs of all the plans. One of the changes that was made this year was that the middle school and high school did separate out. There's a comment, they're all on one singular plan, but they have separate goals. Each of these plans has also gone through the school council. School councils are required by law to be created. And the school council is actually the organization that approves the school improvement plans. One of the pieces that I just, I know I wrote this in the description. In our policy, it's actually July 1st is when this is supposed to be from the school committee. But we, well, I mean, we've never even come close. Usually it's sometime in October, the end of October. This is by far the earliest we've gotten them to you. And we were in a place where we could have brought them to the last meeting. But given what was on the agenda, what we might have done, maybe decided to wait a little bit longer. But all the principals are here. So if you do have any questions or comments you'd like to share with them, they're here to give feedback or hear your feedback and answer any questions that you may have.
I mean, I'll just give them a quick, open-ended opportunity if there's anything that anyone wants to highlight or flag or changes or anything. So this is an opportunity to do it, but if not, no big deal.
Yeah, so I'll just say from my position, one of the things that's very nice that you'll see woven without, there's a common philosophical approach in the way we're doing education, right? And I think you see that in the middle school, high school one, that says, it's our four pillars, right? Students first, always, communication, professionalism, and curriculum. And they have done a good job of aligning their goals and connecting them to, we want that vertical connection from what they're doing as a school to what the district's strategic plan is. In addition to that, now that they have those in place, their teachers are now working on their goals. And those, their goals should align to school improvement goals, but do align to our goals. So it's, it is that nice vertical alignment that you want. There's obviously sometimes things are different in each building that there's, they're not aligned to strategic plan, but most of their, most of their goals are all, all in flow. Another interesting aspect of it is we traditionally have scraps and hey, we're gonna start anew with our goals this year. We actually don't have data. Like, no, Mr. Conway got data to the principals as soon as it came out from the state this year. So they know, like, in the school councils, when the data all comes out publicly, they're gonna have to take that and make adjustments to their plan. So these are not just, here's the plan, here's where it is today. It's, yes, here's the plan coming before you today. However, once data comes in, they might make adjustments to those goals. But for the most part, they are on point from where they should be.
Just seem gracefully to that front of the train group. That's why it should be nice to them.
I have a question. I'll do the comment. So I liked how so many of the elementary school ones were sort of like similar, but not identical. So, I mean, because honestly, like, as a community of schools and educators, it allows them to support each other. And also, I mean, for the teachers, that, you know, they can have team goals and those kinds of things if they're working on those same things. So I thought that that was really helpful in terms of collaboration. My question, and it might not so much be for them as you, sorry, is I'm curious about the handwriting piece. I understand why it's pre-K, but I'm curious why it's only going up to your first grade? Particularly something that's come up and then in and out of the standards in terms of cursor? I was wondering if somebody could tell us why that is.
So that handwriting without tiers is curriculum, we use pre-K, K, and grade one. They do have grade two curriculum. We have not necessarily applied it in the past. We've been using handwriting without tiers religiously for pre-K to grade one. That's been the approach. Pursive is not something that we have spent a lot of time on. It is not a focus of the curriculum frameworks, as it once was. It's just been the approach that we've had moving forward. So for students after grade one, would be more support around it. We have some of that support in place. It is one of those things that we think, so we have kids going into fourth grade who are probably time-wise, most prolifically impacted by COVID shutdown. Both the closure of the school year and then having some, some part-time experiences when they were in first grade. Handwriting was, and even that whole year we were back, there wasn't a lot of handwriting going on. Kids were using a lot of technology. No offense to Cat and all the work she's done, but there is an aspect of actually handwriting. So I think we do see kids in third and fourth and fifth grade, whose handwriting is poor. There's not a lot of change that happens for a lot of them at that point. But we don't see it. In fact, one of the comments from Teacher Today was, the handwriting of kids in second grade was great. It was the best they've seen. And I think you see a result of actual doing it in school. It's one of those things that kids just did not do that during those periods.
I mean, but also, I'm just curious if it's something that's been discussed whether at the building level or at the eighth grade level in terms of not just those kids who missed out, but, you know, the importance of that connection with some of the literacy outcomes is shown, that some value. So I was just curious if that was the reason we're stopping your state to come forward.
Yeah, and I think it's just where the standards mostly call for it. And that's been the time it's put into it, so.
Chris?
I thank everybody for all of their work. One of the questions that I have is, I guess, both as a district, but individually as schools. I think way back when, when we would have these and there were some differences between the schools, some of it had to do with the actual buildings and making, and the page school's a perfect example that prior to the page renovation, that was a huge detriment to academics there. We've kind of gone through that with the renovation, but I think specifically now with the town of West Newbury looking for it and wondering whether we need to still be cognizant of that work with the towns to make sure that whatever is needed with capital projects, that has an impact on education, that we're working with the towns to really make sure that that is incorporated in the school improvement plan?
So, so that I know is one of Mr. Seymour's main directives, is to make sure all that gets taken care of. And I know, page specific, Ms. McTerry and I have sat on with the town of West Newbury when they were looking at, they've done tours of page and they've asked questions about what's going on, like just Greg Hatten as well and Bob Danforth. So we're all highly involved with that. For the, for the school council, I don't know if it's as much as a critical piece for them as it is for us to make sure those, and I know Mr. Seymour and I were talking about today, like all the conversations he has with, already with Rebecca Angus and Carol, just about what's going on in the building of Bobson, of Alvey, whoever person might be about what is it that's needed. Like Merrimack, just recently with the, they needed a huge piece of equipment from us. We gave it to them. Mr. Seymour's been on top of that. And I think today you heard from Merrimack about asbestos. Like, they're gonna do some asbestos removal in one of the buildings. So it's, that part of it, I know is a constant flow. I think you probably see that in their individual goals, which you all don't get to see. But certainly could be reflected in mine.
Right, it just seems like, like, so this is when I first came on the school committee. And, and that was a very important school improvement plan specific to each of the towns. And then all the towns kind of did some big projects, so it kind of slid away.
Yeah.
But like Mr. Rossi said earlier, like, if we let this get beyond where action should be taken rather, rather than in response, but ahead of time, to make sure that that's part of our goals, is to make sure the elementary schools. I think the towns are doing it right now, but I don't want to lose sight of the fact that it also has an impact on education and make sure that we're keeping that at the forefront, working with the towns.
I would just say, Mr. Seymour and Bob Danforth, both of that, both of that issue is, will appear, both of their goals did last year for Mr. Danforth, will again this year because the towns need to know what, what their, what the status is of their buildings that they're leasing to us. And when we're making major repairs or minor repairs over and over and over again.
Right.
If there's a chronic problem, particularly when we're having conversations potentially in the regional agreement about increasing it from $10,000 to $20,000 for repair. They're, they're wanting a much more descriptive narrative of what it is that's going on in their spaces. And obviously for us, you said, I could imagine, like, when there's mold in the building, like there had been, that's gonna impact learning and the school council would have to take that on. I don't think there's an issue if that was something that had to happen, one of their school councils, that they could add something in when, when something came up, for sure. For sure.
In relationship to that, that's sort of what I was thinking of, those types of things when I was reading the Merrimack. One about school safety. I mean, I know some of that is like protocols and stuff, but I, that's what I was thinking is like that may be more relevant to where they're at with their buildings versus.
Right.
So I thought that was a positive in that direction.
I just want to say, I really appreciate the PBIS being integrated, especially in some middle school. It's great to have a beautiful building to go to. It's great to have solid curriculum, but if you're not happy being here because of the behavior of others or because you're just unhappy yourself and don't know what that has, it's, I mean, kids spend a lot of time at school, more than anyone else. So I appreciate that. Has anyone talked about it?
PBIS years ago. And I hadn't really heard it mentioned in a while, so I'm grateful for the steps you've taken to implement that. And it looks like the form, you know, the formula you've come up with for the action initiatives on that. Thank you for all the plans and all the components, like, in particular, that was one I was glad to see. Having children that didn't always love to come to school because of what they experienced, yeah.
Anybody want to make a motion?
I will make a motion to approve all five. Four. Four. School improvement plan, second.
All of those in favor? And yeah, thank you all again. We all know how much work there is and you guys have year-round in terms of block check. When I looked through these and I know hearing from other members that people felt like decent markers that came in, as Dr. B said, ahead of at least our schedule, so. Thank you.
So I'm seeing the next item on the list. And before we get to that, I just wanted to make mention, I totally missed all this on my enhancements. But Friday will be the first, so there's a game going on right now, starting at 6:30. Girl soccer, Newburyport is up there right now for the first night game. And on Friday, it will be the first Friday night football game in Patakett's history. And that will be free. We're not, we're not charging any patrons, any community members or people from Hamilton-Wenton. We're, we're opening the doors to everybody just to come in and participate. So if you're around and wanna watch that game on that field, a couple of caveats on that. I think you all know, like, the building, everything's not completely done yet. So you will see a very small scoreboard versus a scoreboard that will be there. We think within two weeks, you'll see there's, in front of the windows, there's still that back fence, whatever they put up there. It's not supposed to be there, it's still there. And Greg likes to say this, when they were putting, and I agree 100%, when they were putting it up, didn't they stop and think, why are we doing this? And when you go and ask them, like, well, that's what the plan said. So it's not the plans we looked at, but, so just, there's minor things that still need to be adjusted. But there actually will be a scoreboard. I had an interesting phone call two weekends ago. Are you, are you guys putting a scoreboard there? Because there's a lot of people saying that, you know, they built this building, they forgot about the scoreboard. And I responded, please tell all those people, thank you. I completely forgot. Mr. Seymour forgot, the athletic director forgot, the architect forgot. Like, we know scoreboard's gonna be there and there'll be a scoreboard on the front field as well that goes in at the same time. So for field hockey and a soccer games, that scoreboard will be out there as well. So still new. And I think that one of the bigger things, I'm curious about, it won't be finished to where we want it to be, but the PAA will be taking over concessions, will be running concessions. So we'll see what they have in play for Friday, how much they get in for Friday. But I think we have a game this Friday for football and then. But I think we have a game this Friday for football and then in October is the rest of the games. But in the meantime, all the soccer games, the PAA will be able to start experimenting with things and getting sales, which would be pretty cool for the first time ever. It's neat.
So quick question, social media question. Is a telephone pole in the middle of the exit?
Yep.
I'm like people that it's going to be moved.
Correct information. What you say is correct. Like that was National Grid.
It's a historic figure in the state.
Yeah. So, so it's true. I mean, I know a lot of people think we're silly and don't have good heads on our shoulders, but we, we're at National Grid, they know, they're going to, we, two weeks is what I think we were told on Thursday.
We paid $1,500 to have her move. Hopefully there's more than one company, which means Comcast and Verizon and whatever have a line on it, they all have to get together and move their lines individually. So after that, one went up there and unplugged it and it's stapled without a pole, without seven different companies being involved.
Yeah. And, and I'll also point out, I know this is, but for the field hockey games or any JV soccer games that are done down that lower field, there, there will be stands, they're going to put up temporary stands at some point, I think are going to go up on the parking area because fans are not supposed to be on the field itself. There's not supposed to be chairs on the field, but at the same time, we're going to be putting down, well, you've seen bloom. You came in, you saw big piles of blooms, some blooms going down, hydroseed. So Greg and I were talking, we might just put it on the, on the hydroseed stuff anyway, but that's where there'll be stands there eventually for fans. So again, it's nothing that we hadn't thought of, just needed everybody to clear out so we can do the things we need to do to get ready.
And how many parking spots do we have to do?
400.
A lot.
What do?
We've got plenty.
That's great.
It is. It is. Much, much different. I opened this with, helping this with the start of this year has been smoother. A year ago, great, we're coming into this building, but you recall, everyone was parking way off down yonder and walking a half a mile to get to the building. And then when we opened the parking lots in December, it was, I, I, it was just so much going on. So even though they're buttoning things up around here and still probably about another two years before MSBA is completely cleared out of this, it's been relatively smooth. Phone poles, another one. I had my own mother was calling and yelling at me on Saturday about the street sign that says Farm Lane this way, Pawtucket this way. And Greg said, it's been there for 40 years. I didn't even know what he was talking about. So it came out and saw it this morning. So I get advice and input from everybody.
Listen to.
Yeah, I should listen.
Do we have a motion? Go ahead, turn it on.
And I will say on a part of the note, because I haven't been through in a couple weeks, just seeing kids on the field, seeing, seeing the spaces that look so much more reasonable in space for big gigantic cars and smaller cars and just the traffic flow where they're organized, sending out the video of how that all needed to work. And I think again, with some more communication, I really like the grade specific stuff because again, if you don't, if you don't need another grade, you don't have to look at it, but if you want to, you can. So I just want to say kudos with rolling all of that out. And again, if it's the pole or where's the scoreboard or, you know, again, communicating that to all of us to keep pushing out to everyone in case they weren't aware that they're not quite done yet. Have to say what is here for the first day of school is pretty incredible.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All votes in favor? Okay. Thank you.